Sometimes when things aren't that good, you can call on the community to assist, to be with you until you get information to them or some additional kind of thing. But if you wait until the incident to happen, then that's too late. And there was an example in St. Louis, less than three miles away from it, where Mr. Powell was shot and killed, banishing a knife, when two police officers came up on the scene. Now, quite frankly, I'm not satisfied with the answer. But at least the police chief came out on the scene. They had also been able to obtain the video that was taken by a witness. And then he released information on the scene, and we didn't have an incident. I submit to you that the reason we didn't have an incident was because of the transparency and the information that was given to people on the scene. But the other thing that needs to happen is that you can't wait till that, till the crisis in order to get it done. So you got to develop the crisis. As I was talking about community policing, generally in our community, we don't, we haven't had that experience with the police where trust and confidence is an everyday kind of thing. They come talk to us about turning in our brothers and sisters, but they aren't talking to us about developing the relationship and the public safety policies and practices that we need to have in our community. You will continue to have crisis if we don't have it. That's why I'm at the stage of saying that if that model of community policing isn't working for us, let's find one that's going to work for us.
Okay, great. Brother Jaziri X, you talked about Officer Darren Wilson. There are probably thousands of Darren Wilsons in police forces across the country. Racist, trigger-happy cops infused with the sickness of white supremacy, unfortunately. Some have said that Darren Wilson will probably not be indicted, given the peculiarities of Missouri's justice system and given the pro-cop history of the prosecutor, the county of St. Louis prosecutor. I want to have Jaziri respond to that, but also I'm going to ask this question to the two attorneys on the panel, Sister Anwain and Sister Nkechi. What is it, what are the possibilities, realistic possibilities, for Darren Wilson to be indicted and brought to trial for murder?
Well, I'll start. In 2012, I made a song called "Do We Need to Start a Riot?" And I made that song because of the report that the Malcolm X Grassroots Movement did, that in 2012, 313 black people were killed by the police, security guards, or people like George Zimmerman, which amounted to one every 28 hours. And ultimately, when I asked the question, "Do we need to start a riot?", I'm really asking, what do we have to do to get justice? That if we are continually shot down and no one is to blame, then what do you think will eventually happen if this is something that happens over and over and over again? So, you know, Ferguson is simmering right now, but so is New York City, so is Chicago, Illinois, so is LA, and so is DC. So I would be, if I was, I'd be very careful. Zimmerman was found not guilty. Michael Dunn was found guilty of attempted murder, but not in the murder of Jordan Davis, the person that he shot and killed. And now if Darren Wilson is not indicted, what do you want us to do? Because if you're not going to give us justice, then we have to ask, are we wrong if we then take justice in our own hands?
All right now. All right now. So the legal questions, two things. It's very clear that McAuliffe, the prosecuting attorney in St. Louis, isn't about zero. There, we should not be expecting much. He's already started off in a horrible way by saying that he's going to have the officer testify before the grand jury. That's almost unheard of, people. This is a very unusual thing. We also have been watching the police force do everything in their power to uphold this gentleman, this officer, by saying that he was, quote, "being bull rushed" by Mr. Michael Brown, when he's been shot at repeatedly. Ridiculous accusations, but we are knowing that a lot of that is coming from the police department and from the police union. So I am not expecting much of the state. The question is, what is the Department of Justice going to do? Because they have the authority to bring civil rights charges. If they're going to do it, they can't drag their feet. Remember, this administration goes out in 2016. They will be over in December of 2016. So it is imperative that if we're going to have a prosecution, that charges are brought right now, as early and as soon as possible. All the elements that are required are there. The question of intent is the one that will be the hardest that they will ever deal with. But still, you can infer intent, and this is going to be a great case. It's a case that is worth the Department of Justice pursuing. We don't want to be sitting here a year from now like we are with Zimmerman, saying, "What happened?" We got to keep the pressure up, my brothers and sisters. We got to demand a prosecution. We got to demand that this man be brought to justice. We cannot expect anybody to pursue justice here if we don't make it happen through our actions. Thank you.
And let me just add on to what my sister said, because the Department of Justice does have a high bar. There is that hurdle, that hurdle of intent, that same hurdle that has stymied us time after time after time after time after time. And that's why I keep harping on the need to not limit ourselves within the confines of the US jurisdictional law. We need to up the ante. The SIR, the International Racial Convention Treaty, says that you can circumvent intent if you can show discriminatory impact. There's no question in terms of discriminatory impact, but it's not within US law to be able to use that, even though the US Senate has ratified that treaty. However, we do need to be creative. There is the Ninth Amendment to the United States Constitution, which states that the provisions of this Constitution shall not be denied or disparaged. But what is, it's a gateway to international law, basically. Say that there are rights retained by the people. That's a provision of the Ninth Amendment. What is one of those rights? One of those rights is the right to international human rights law.
Okay, thank you. Brother Shelton, you are a senior representative of the oldest civil rights organization in the country, the NAACP. You're also a lobbyist on Capitol Hill. Can't hear? No. Yeah, I want you to talk a little bit about the official government response from the Obama administration, from Congress, from the Senate, to the crisis in Ferguson. There's been deathly silence on the part of some of our national political figures, some of whom have already begun the race for president. But there's also been some sharp criticism of the president's response from several prominent black public intellectuals like Dr. Cornel West, Dr. Michael Eric Dyson. First of all, the response of the civil rights community to the crisis. We have not seen any national civil rights leaders in front of the demonstrations or in front of the cameras. Why is that the case?
Well, let me first start out by saying, the newest president of the NAACP, Cornel Williams-Brooks, was on the ground in Ferguson, Missouri, the very next day. In essence, he hopped on a plane, I don't know which one of these words is best, he hopped on a plane the very next day and was on the ground, holding a community meeting at the same church, quite frankly, that the funeral was held in. So we are there and been there. The difference between the NAACP and some of the others is, we have a branch that actually represents all of St. Louis County, which Ferguson is a part of. In addition to that, our state conference president came in from Columbia, Missouri, and our St. Louis City branch president came in from St. Louis City and has been on the ground along with our youth, addressing issues, and a part of those that are working. Here's the challenge we have right now. What we're seeing is a classic move towards suppression. That is, if you look at all the moves they were taking, when you start arresting reporters, it's about suppression. When you implement a no-fly zone, so that news helicopters cannot come overhead and look down at what's going on, we are talking about suppression. When we talk about the standard processes that are utilized to make sure the truth does not get out, we've seen all those playing out in Ferguson, Missouri. When you walk into American icons like the McDonald hamburger store, and you arrest a reporter from the Washington Post and the Huffington Post, while they are charging their computers to report on the story, when that's going on, you know suppression is underway. So when we see what's happening with police officers that are actually defending other police officers, you know there's a problem. That's like saying to me, well, my taxes aren't being done right. I would say to the federal government, "I appreciate you raising that issue. I will investigate myself." Indeed, when you have the Ferguson police on the ground in Ferguson, protecting one of their own and suppressing the information coming out of that community with the strategies we've seen played out, indeed, what we have is a strategy of suppression. So here's what we're doing. We're moving an agenda that will go far beyond this case, but we're on this case too. It's step by step. Justice has to be done for the Brown family and Michael Brown himself. Secondly, the riot signals have to be sent out that when these things happen to unarmed African-American teenagers in the streets, we will not stand idly by and say, "Oops, another part of collateral damage being played out in this very militaristic manner in which we're addressing what's going on in Ferguson, Missouri." It's not the first time. Don't forget, we were in Cleveland, Ohio, less than 10 years ago, because a 14-year-old kid was shot in the back by a police officer as he ran in the other direction. The question is, what happened then? There were no changes. We want to pass a number of pieces of legislation. Number one, every community should have a police accountability review board that has real power of subpoena, has the power of independence, has independent resources, so that police, when these situations happen, are not investigating themselves. Local police accountability review boards with real power. Secondly, we have to pass the End Racial Profiling Act that's now pending in the US Congress. Congressman Conyers and Senator Carr, they both introduced this piece of legislation to hold police departments accountable and cut off their funds when they misbehave themselves. Not $1 to misbehaving police departments. Thirdly, we've got to pass the Law Enforcement Trust and Integrity Act. Let me ask you a question. You're going to have to answer this now, but I have to give the microphone to somebody else, but here's the question. If you're going to determine that some police officer is actually misusing force, that they're abusing force, don't you first have to define what the acceptable use of force is? Should not the question be, if you have an unarmed teenager shot to death in the street, what happened? What happened to the non-dentally uses of force? What happened to the baton? What happened to tasers? What happened to billets of clubs? What happened to other forms of tools that actually say that if somebody is misbehaving, we will capture them, we will actually address them, and we'll make sure that they get a fair trial before we actually act as executioner in these particular cases? So let me say, we've got a full agenda to move forward. What I have here that I want to pass out to everyone is all the pieces of legislation that we believe need to be passed by the US Congress, begin fixing this problem and again, eliminating the insanity factor by making sure we don't continue to do the same thing over and over again in the same way and expecting a different result. I look forward to more questions.
Right, thank you.
If we do our job, we will have a better Congress, because every piece of legislation that's talked about here is meaningless without the right Congress. But here's what we can do. While we're waiting to get the best Congress, I'm going to tell everyone that the Department of Justice has a guidance that has not been reissued since 2003 on racial profiling. 2003, under the Ashcroft administration. We need to update that guidance, because it's the one that sets the framework for what is racial profiling by police. It's the guidance that tells who gets money from the Department of Justice, the Department of Defense, the Department of Homeland Security. All of that comes under that guidance. Yet we have not demanded of this administration six years that they update that guidance. That has to happen. Secondly, the Department of Justice has been called upon by the Legal Defense Fund, and we join them, in saying that they need to publish and collect data on every police department that's out here shooting and killing kids and killing young people. And they need to publish that data, and they need to stop giving them any money, because the abuse is happening through their actions. So we are saying that there's a lot that can be done by executive order, by guidance, by practice, and by funding. Don't underestimate the amount of money that police forces get from the federal government. I, you guys probably know, that three years ago, almost in November, that the SWAT team invaded my own home and held my family at gunpoint for three hours, threatening to kill us. Never produced a warrant, threatened to batter down my front door, lied to the press about what they had done afterwards, still lying. And they came in my house, they had, they made Ferguson look like chumps. They had Eric Cottler riot gear on. They had sniper rifles. They had every kind of shield, everything you can imagine. And they threatened to kill every one of my family members, including me and my 80-year-old mother. So let me be very clear. This is Prince George's County I'm talking about. Maryland accounts for more SWAT team action than any other state in the Union. And we need to be very clear that when I started telling people about this, they thought I was lying. They thought I was exaggerating. They said, "This doesn't happen in America." Now we see it. So it's very, very important that we're very clear that this can be stopped. They can stop giving them military equipment. They can stop having these police forces have all these SWAT teams that are running around thinking they're in Iraq or Afghanistan in Prince George's County. We can change this, but we have to unite and make the change. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister. Sister Nkechi, you are a senior analyst at the Open Society Foundation, which has been doing for a number of years excellent work in trying to stop the war on drugs. You have been involved in this campaign yourself. I'd like you to draw the parallels between the war on drugs and the militarization of the police forces across the country. It has been said that the reason that the Department of Justice, the reason that the Homeland Security and the Department of Defense have been sending military equipment to the police forces is to so-called "fight the war on drugs" as well as counterterrorism throughout the United States. Can you comment on that relationship, please?
Yes, thank you very much. Many folk do not realize this, but since 1995, the Pentagon has distributed $5.1 billion in surplus military equipment to US police departments. And I just want to give a little background as a context of the time at which this happened. This happened in the wake of the Crime Bill of 1994. We're talking about the same crime bill that saw the largest expansion of the death penalty in modern times. The same crime bill that had proliferations of scores of mandatory minimum sentences to trying of 13-year-olds as adults. The federal Three Strikes Bill, incentives to states for more money to build more prisons, to lock more people up for longer periods of time. And all of this was part and parcel of the war on drugs. This was the backdrop for the militarization of the domestic US police force. We're talking about the things that Barbara Anwain was speaking of when they came down and knocked down her door. We're talking about armored tanks. We're talking about mine-resistant vehicles. We have a situation, we have officers in Ferguson running around in camouflage. I mean, why do they need camouflage in the inner city? They have these huge toys that have been collecting dust in the warehouses, so they're looking for any excuse to bring these weapons of mass destruction out. So they have taken the war on drugs, used the war on terrorism as an excuse, and are using these things, you know, against our people. There are measures in Congress right now, they're speaking about measures to limit the use of military-style equipment in domestic police forces. We need to look at this. This isn't just coming from progressives. We have conservatives such as Senator Van Paul, who has been speaking out against things like this as well. This is very, very important, and my time is up, but there is a definite connection. They're all related, and we need to make sure that we connect the dots.
Thank you, Sister. Brother Jaziri, passionate young hip-hop activist, tell me how the hip-hop artistic community has responded to Ferguson, and what are they doing to keep the memory of Ferguson alive within the artistic community?
Well, I think first, I mean, you know, the word was spread through social media, and really, the word was spread by the young people in Ferguson that witnessed what happened to Mike Brown, that took pictures of it, that put it out, you know what I'm saying? They began to organize on social media. So naturally, when it began to be spread on social media, kind of hip-hop artists stepped in, you know what I'm saying? One, Young Jeezy actually had a show in Ferguson, I mean, in St. Louis, the next day. He said he actually wanted to cancel the show, or even wanted everybody to donate the money to the show, to the family. He wasn't able to get, convince everybody to do that, but he came, he put a Mike Brown shirt on. He actually went to the Quip Trip after that. He had a hip-hop artist named J. Cole make a song about it, go down to Ferguson, not to do, didn't do any press, just went to speak to the community, and they were so happy. You know, I was, when I, when I went to West Florida with David Banner, the people were so happy to see him, because not only, you know, is he, you know, an actor and a hip-hop artist as well-known, but he was defending the community on Twitter, defending them on CNN. And one of the things that somebody said to him was, they said, you know, "We didn't want Al Sharpton or Jesse Jackson to come down. We wanted you to come down," because of how he was representing that community. So it's been a lot of people, myself included, that have used our hip-hop to raise awareness about this issue. T.I., John Legend was on Twitter just ethering folks, you know what I'm saying? That were, that were trying to take him for a joke. But then there's also been quiet or silence for some of the biggest hip-hop artists right now. There's been silence from a lot of these white artists that co-op black culture to make millions of dollars, and then they don't say, you know, when something happens to the black community, they don't say anything. And I say this to say, as consumers, we need to be mindful of that. And we need to hold these artists accountable. If you're not going to speak to us when we need your voice, when we're suffering and having pain, when your album comes out, and then all of a sudden you want to start tweeting and Facebooking and having questions, then we not going to support you, then you not going to support us.
Danny, can you hear me? Sisters and brothers, we are going to be getting back to the panel. We want to wrap things up here with sort of final wrap-up statements from each of the panelists. And then we are going to invite some members who are our special guests to be respondents to what the panelists have said with very, very brief comments of their own. So I'm going to start from the opposite direction this time. And Kechi, if you're ready, to give your concluding remarks. And I'm going to ask the panelists to please sort of focus on recommendations, action items, what is to be done in the days and weeks ahead. First, Sister Nkechi.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to say, for a system to be just, the public must be confident that at every stage of the process, from the initial investigation of a crime by the police officer on the beat to the prosecution and punishment of that crime by prosecutors and the judges, that individuals in like circumstances are treated alike. Today, our criminal justice system strays far from that ideal. We need to look at the recommendations that the unified civil rights organizations have called for, and I want to particularly point out the use of cameras, body cam cameras on them, so we don't have to rely on individual people out there on the street with their iPhones documenting. This should be part and parcel of the police department's system. I want to thank the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and the other sponsoring organizations, Bus Boys and Poets, for providing this vehicle to really expose to the world what we think needs to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sister Nkechi. Brother Ron Hamter.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the Institute of the Black World also. In every movement, I think there should be a strategy that community begin to organize themselves. I've worked with a brother who resides in Durham, North Carolina. His name is Darrell Ackerson. And Darrell is involved in a project where they are organizing, they've done their homework, they've done the statistical work, they've looked at what the police do and don't do in Durham. And they are organizing this community of Durham to back the police out of their community. In other words, to take control of the public safety issues and concerns that affect their community. We can do that.
I was sent to Ferguson. I was sent to Ferguson by Harry Belafonte and an organization called Sancofa. Harry Belafonte met with about 40 to 50 hip-hop artists last year to give us guidance and direction, to help us to begin to use our arts, to talk about issues like mass incarceration, violence in our community, violence against women. He not trying to grab the mic and get on the mic. He's using his wisdom and guide us to God and direct us. I was at a meeting with the Elder Minister Louis Farrakhan, with hip-hop artists, where he's guiding and directing us to use our arts to raise the consciousness of our community. So I say to the elders, "Support the young leaders on the ground. Guide us, direct us, and back us, and we will win this thing." And the last thing I want to say, I want to say one more thing. Black people, we have the God-given right to defend ourselves, all right? So I say it like this, when I put my hands up, I put my hands up like this. Best believe it, y'all, please, one minute.
All right. Jaziri X, thank you, my brother. Sister Barbara Anwain, your final comments.
A couple of things, my brothers and sisters. A couple of things. First of all, again, vote. You should be on the phone calling every single person you know in every state you know, making sure they vote on November 4th. In Ferguson, 12% voter turnout. Ferguson, 67% black, one black city councilman. Mayor White, talk about, talk about, his city is, has no racial problem. The school system, everything, is an example of the need for us to fight back. Fight back with what we got. We got the vote. Fight back with our economic power. Fight back, so it's very important. The second thing is, I saw that special that many people saw last night, "Y'all to Fix My Life," and I said, and I tweeted the following. You cannot think that by preaching a gospel of personal responsibility that you can solve systemic, structural racism problems. You can't. You can't. As we take on the police, there are problems with the school system in Ferguson. As we take on the police, there are problems with unemployment in Ferguson. As we take on all these issues, they're all related, my sisters and brothers. Systemic... Systemic, structural racism has to be dismantled before justice will ever prevail. We got to understand that, that nobody is safe. It doesn't matter what your title, doesn't matter what your accomplishments. So going forward, every single one of us, let's make the following pledges. That we are in this to win. We are not in this for the moment. We will make sure that we join something. Don't think you can just change it from sleeping and wishing. It's got to be movement and unity. So join the movement and make sure that you work for these recommendations. Get the unity statement. Go to lawyerscommittee.org. Lawyerscommittee.org, my organization, and get the unity statement. Follow me and all of these great leaders on Twitter because we're dropping knowledge constantly about everything. And lastly, I want you to say, this is my pledge, my pledge, to Leslie McFadden, my pledge to Michael Brown Senior, my pledge, the same pledge I made to Sabrina Fulton, the same pledge I made to Judy Macbeth. When the cameras are gone, when people aren't seeking interviews anymore, I will be there. I will have the back of the black people who have been shot in Ferguson who are in jail. I will have the back of the people who are calling my line and burning it up for legal representation. I will have their back because this is not about film, it's about us. My heart can't sleep as long as these injustices are taking place. So next month, the trial starts of Dante Servin. Do people know who he is? He's the police officer who shot and killed Raquiva Boyd in Chicago. This sister who was innocent, sitting in her car, and he shot and killed her. These are the people who we got to be there for. Let's not forget, every community where there's a need, that we lift up the struggle, that we are their voices, and that we're making the change. I know I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sister Barbara Anwain. Finally, brother, Hillary Shelton of the NAACP.
No, thank you very much, Brother Rojas, Brother Daniels. Thank you for bringing us all together again to have the kind of conversation we have to have in the family. Let me just say that it is clearly time for a new paradigm. A time for a new paradigm. It's the new realities and new expectations of what we have under the circumstances we're living. The challenge is, we've been able to go through a process and describe all these victims of gun violence at the hands of police officers, all these victims of death, but yet, we keep coming back and having the same conversation over and over again. I remember having a conversation about Amadou Diallo, an African standing in the vestibule of his apartment building in New York City. Over 40 police shots hit over 20 times. The only thing he had in his hands was his car keys. It's time for a new paradigm. As we talk about what's has happened with Michael Brown, new paradigm must be a new set of expectations and new rules of engagement. What that means is, we must change the law from the bottom up at the local community. We have to talk about how we screen or, in these cases, do not screen those who would be police officers on our streets. We have too many cowboys with police guns and police cruisers. We need to make sure we have the protections places we must have. Very well, video cameras at every step. Yes, there's a video camera for a gun called a gun cam. From the time you take the gun out of your holster, beginning within seven seconds, it begins recording everything in front of your gun. We need police gun cams. We need body cams. We want to make sure as you're moving throughout, we see what you're doing. If you are an official representative of the United States or your local community, you have rights that other people don't have, including the right to kill. We have to make sure those rights are being observed, and very well, we have to monitor what you're doing. We need body cams. We need dash cams. The cams around police cruisers, that when the car pulls up, you see what's happening in front, we have to continue to monitor police from that side as well. Every local community needs a Police Accountability Review Board with the kind of power and independence that should pay for the investigation. We have to make sure when the Police Accountability Review Board finds that there's a problem, they don't go to the police captain to ask permission to move forward, but can actually convene a grand jury in which criminal charges can be brought. We need police accountability review boards with real power in D.C., in Ferguson, and every place else across the country. We have to pass, we have to pass the End Racial Profiling Act to make sure that it was very clear what racial profiling is, that it is illegal, and if you utilize this strategy, you will be punished and kicked off your police department. We need to make sure we pass the End Racial Profiling Act. We have to make sure we're very clear on what the acceptable use of force is in the apprehension of a criminal. We have a bill now pending called the Law Enforcement Trust and Integrity Act. What it does is set the standards.